Test, test, one, two. Check, check. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power, under Iowa law and the City of Des Moines, to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment to introduce our board members. On the audience's left is Heather Ann Rowe. Next to her is Kuku Asa. Next to him is Marlis Jones. On the audience's right, joining us shortly will be Tom DiCio. Present is Dave Gare. Next to him is Rhonda Sadio. And I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. I'll introduce city staff who will be assisting today with the process and presentations. To my left is the Board of Adjustments Legal Counsel, Mr. Gary Guidelock. City staff that will be presenting today, Frank Dunn Young, Senior City Planner, Bert Droste, Deputy Planning Administrator, Chris Heilzkov, Zoning Enforcement Officer, and our meeting moderators that assist with our audio, video, and recording, Monica Vazquez and Carlotta Wolder. I'm going to go over the meeting's procedure here. For some of you, this may be the first time you've come down here to the zoning board of adjustment. You may hope it's your last time you need to be here, but we'll take everybody through this, so don't worry about the process. We will help you along. But I'll give a little background here. First and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. And if you don't have a copy of the agenda or the staff recommendations, when I'm through with my opening remarks, I've got some copies up here to the right in the little block trays by the drawer, or by the door. Feel free to grab one. The board members have each received a copy of that agenda, and the staff recs, the board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the appellant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. The items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first section of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. They will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions that have been recommended by staff, or if there's an individual present in the audience or a board member that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur on the regular agenda. So I will come back to the consent agenda here in just a few minutes, again, to help everybody through that. For the regular portion of the agenda, each item will be announced in the order that it appears. Items listed, oh, I'm sorry. After an item is announced on the regular portion of the agenda, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal. They will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anybody that wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. Lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. And again, I will come back to that, so if you're here on any specific item, we'll help you through that if you want to speak on that item. Speakers are requested and must, frankly, speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. They must begin their presentation by first giving both their complete name and address of business or residence, as may be appropriate to the issue. In the event, you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers must remain courteous and focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item. The board will then immediately deliberate the request. We will make a decision here today on the appeal. Please note that it always takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we'd ask that you wait at least about one week from today's hearing if you would need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. Any material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is part of the permanent record. If you do plan to present any photos, documents, drawings, or anything else today that you've not already given copies of to city staff, you'll need to be sure to do so. And you may contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything presented today. A few quick housekeeping items, we ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. Great job so far. Also, please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. We're doing good with that. And if you'd need to use the restroom, you can just walk through the doors to the right of the staircase. You don't have to go back downstairs. There are restrooms just to the left of the staircase by the elevator. Once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the meeting, or you can stick around and listen and learn. We'll have a five-minute break in the meeting after 3:00, if that might be needed. So those are my opening comments. Again, if anybody needs a copy of the agenda, feel free to grab one. Otherwise, in looking at the agenda, I do not believe we have any changes to the agenda. So what I'm going to do here is I'm just going to quickly review, as I mentioned, there are, items on the consent agenda are items that staff believes and are recommending for approval with the request, subject to a few staff conditions that are noted in the agenda. So items one, two, and three, staff is recommending this board approve that generally without discussion. So what I'm going to do here is just list these three items off. If you are here in opposition to any one of those three items, or if the applicant, for some reason, would disagree with the staff recommendation for conditions, we will hear that item separately. Otherwise, we're going to look to vote for approval as is. So item one is a conditional use request at 655 Walnut Street, related to employers' mutual casualty company, related to the sale of wine or beer, related to a ballet studio with performances. Is there anybody here that would be in opposition to this board granting the request for item one? Just raise your hand. Seeing none. Item two, a zoning exception request at 3725 Beaver Avenue, Casey's Marketing Company, related to some illuminated canopy signs. Is there anybody in the audience that would be opposed to the board granting the requested exceptions? Just raise your hand if so. Seeing none. Item three is a zoning exception request by the Meridian at Gray's Landing for 25 Southwest 11th Street, again, related to some installation of signing on a building. Is there anybody here that would be opposed to this board granting the exceptions as noted? All right, seeing none. Board members, items one, two, and three, would anybody want to hear those separately with concerns? If there are none, would there be a motion to grant approval? Motion by Marlis. Second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries six to zero. So if you were here for items one, two, or three, those have been approved. As long as you comply with the staff recommendations, get it done within two years, and we'll get a copy of your decision and order by next week. Thank you for coming in today. All right, that'll move us to the regular portion of our agenda for our open hearing. Our first item on the agenda is a conditional use request at 310 Court Avenue for use of approximately 8,000 square feet of area within the building for a bar use. And we're going to have staff give an introduction on this. Bert Droste, Deputy Planning Administrator.
Right. Mr. Chair members of the board, Bert Droste, Deputy Planning Administrator for the city. Item number four is a request for a conditional use for a bar. It would allow use of the 8,000-square-foot commercial space that was formerly occupied by the Spaghetti Works Restaurant for a bar use. So again, this is a conditional use for a bar. It's not changing the zoning of the property. It would stay Zone DX2, but it would allow for a bar. And a bar is really just a business that derives less than 50% of its sales from food or food-related products. So the site is located on the south side of Court Avenue, just to the west of the intersection with Third Street. There is the Johnny's Hall of Fame Restaurant at the corner, and then the 8,000-square-foot commercial space. Here is a photo of the space. You can see there's an existing patio to the front and to the west of the business that the bar would use. This is a sketch that the applicant had submitted that shows the proposed layout. You can see they're proposing to have a lot of games and TVs. So this is the write-up that he provided, just gives an idea of the types of games that they would have in the bar, as well as the number of TVs for sporting events. In our staff recommendation, we looked at whether or not a conditional use for a bar would be appropriate here. As the board knows, over the past several years, we've dealt with these types of requests quite a bit. A couple of the documents that staff took into consideration, I can slip through these if you'd like, were the sociable city's assessment that the city commissioned last year to look at the issues that were, I guess, that Court Avenue Entertainment District was experiencing. One of the proposed outcomes of this assessment is that they believe that there should be a more diverse business mix on Court Avenue, not just businesses that use alcohol as entertainment. And then another document I wanted to point out was the Future Forward Plan that the city council adopted last year. It was commissioned by the Downtown Partnership, and it also calls for diversifying uses in the Court Avenue District, and specifically, like, encouraging more retail in the Entertainment And so, like I said, staff's charged with making a recommendation on whether the proposed bar would meet the criteria for granting a conditional use. Again, we don't look at who the applicant is. We don't look at any of that. We just have to take into account whether this location would be appropriate for a bar. And in this instance, we don't believe that it would be appropriate for a bar. We feel there's already an abundance of bars, and I can show you a map here shortly. So we don't believe that it would protect the health, safety, and general welfare of people in the surrounding areas. We also have concerns that there's residential uses immediately above this space. We don't believe that it would be fair to those people to have a loud bar below them. So if I could give you, staff just put together this quick map that shows the existing businesses. So you have to apologize for my sloppy handwriting, but the red dots equal existing bars. So you can see that there are quite a few bars located on the north side of Court Avenue, specifically on both sides of Fourth Street, and then on the west side of Third Street, and then there's the tonic bar on the south side of Court Avenue, further to the east. I put a question mark by the Court Center Building. Is this board's well aware? The Court Center has been the subject of a few hearings in the past couple of years. In, I believe it was August of 2023, the board did amend their conditional use to allow them to have bar uses in that entire building, again, that could be open until 2:00 a.m. I don't believe there's any existing bars operating in that building right now. There is the Stuffed Olive Restaurant that's on the main level of the building. So I'll have you flip back. And then one other thing I wanted to point out was that back in August of 2018, the board had denied a conditional use for, it was the Randolph Apartment Buildings, where the Fo Real Restaurant is. At that time, they're wanting the Fo Real space to be a bar, as well as had alcohol sales for the nail salon in that business. At the time, the board did deny the conditional use for the bar, but the board did grant a conditional use to allow a nail salon to be able to sell alcohol as accessory to their nail salon. So I guess I just wanted to point out, there is precedent for denying bars on the Court Avenue area. So now I'll go through, like I said, our staff recommendation is for denial. We don't believe that it has satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use for a bar. This is the consent map. We received 13 comment cards back, three in support, 10 in opposition, and we got quite a few emails and letters in opposition. I believe there's a packet of those emails and letters in front of each of your chairs so you can read through those. The Downtown Neighborhood Association has registered opposition to the conditional use. I believe they're here, so I'll let them speak to their letter and email, as well as this Court Avenue Vision Survey that they conducted. And here's another email or letter we've received opposing the bar. And these are the comment cards. Like I said, there are three in support and 10 in opposition. This is the Neighborhood Association. I'll go through these letters. And then while we're reading these, I will talk about the police reports. The Police Department did supply the list of reports that Court Avenue has experienced just between January and September of this year, and the Court Avenue District has generated 745 police calls during that time, with that resulting, I think, a total of 69 arrests. All right, and then these next few documents are the applicant's information on the required neighborhood outreach, which I'll let the applicant speak to these when it's his turn. And then, like I said, here's the list of police reports. They're just broken down into different categories, advisals, arrests, citations, impounds, medical calls, public assists, and reports. So total, there were 745, with 69 of those being arrests. And so were there any questions for me?
Board members, we have questions for Bert. Bert, I just got a couple, kind of foundational, fundamental ones, kind of building blocks here. So the zoning district here is DX2, which is called mixed use, right?
Yeah, downtown mixed use.
Downtown mixed use. And does mixed use, what does mixed use mean?
It's a mix of commercial and residential uses.
Okay. So it's not just a retail district. It's not just a commercial district. It's a district where people may live.
Right.
So they could rent or own their living spaces right next door to any other business or mixed type of use, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then along the way, by the city's zoning ordinance, then, in a DX2, even though there can be commercial uses, commercial uses that would be related to things like bars, taverns, or where like 50% or more of the sales are alcohol, those still require coming in front of this board to see if they will fit into the general character, welfare, not generally speaking, set them up to cause a problem.
Correct.
And that's why we review any applicant that would want to do something like this in a DX2, correct?
Right. Yeah, we require conditional uses for any business with on-premise alcohol consumption that's not a restaurant. Because it's Zone DX, or DX1, DX2, DXR, and those districts don't require separation distances, so like, if it were Zone MX, or MX1, MX2, EX, CX, those require separation from parks, daycares, places of worship, schools. But because this is in the DX downtown district, there's no separation required from that. But still, they do need to meet the criteria for granting conditional uses, which have to do with, it's not going to cause congestion, it's not going to cause a nuisance, it won't cause public safety, it won't disturb
Gotcha.
... surrounding residents.
Right. Okay. And related to that, you know, I don't hear people saying, "Oh, the Court Avenue DX2 District." I hear it referred to as the Court Avenue Historic District, and you refer to that in your staff report. I also hear it referred to as the Court Avenue Entertainment District. So I've seen Court Avenue Entertainment District referenced a lot. Is that kind of a subset of kind of a direction that the city wants to go, or?
I would call it more of just a subset of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Under the retired code back, that retired in 2019, we had the, there was a Court Avenue Overlay District
Right.
... that gave this area special provisions related to signage, things like that. But that overlay went away in 2019. So now it's just the Court Avenue Historic Entertainment District, it's just really just
Right.
... a place.
So it's kind of a description when we look at planning and policy, that's what has been used in a lot of these reports, and a lot of these recommendations, and Plan DSM.
Right. Yeah, there's no really defined boundaries of, it stops at
I got you.
... this street or that street.
Okay. All right, that's very helpful. Thank you. All right. Anybody else here from the board? Okay, well, that's just our warm-up act here, so that's the city's background. So the way the hearing works, the applicant or their representative gets to speak, and they have up to 10 minutes to present their case for their appeal or their conditional use request. And again, we'll just need your name, address is appropriate. You got 10 minutes.
You're heading me right off with some tough questions. Hi, my name is Larry Smithson, and I'm running the bar currently at 12, 212 Fourth Street. I'm here today to ask for one simple thing. I want to not have to serve or lie to the city on how much food I'm serving. It has had a liquor license here. It's had a lot of liquor licenses all over. And it is, you have some people that I feel are lying to try to accomplish this, put this in this column, this in this column. I'm here just to be honest and say, hey, I can't do 51% food. I bought The Legends several years ago. Mark Rogers told me that was doing $2.2 million, which was several years back. We know the prices were less then, so it's a lot of business, that he could have never met the 51% food. He goes, people come in to watch a game, they buy an appetizer. He goes, maybe they'll buy a sandwich. He goes, but, he goes, that doesn't cover the four drinks or the four beers they drink. He goes, then you have the people that come in that just bought a few drinks. And he goes, it always adds up to be more. He goes, every once in a while, somebody come in and just buy food, but not very often. I'm going to be a little bit all over the board, and I apologize because I put this together last night, and I read it to my son. My son goes, Dad, don't say all that stuff. And as I hear the complaints and the things going on, I think the stuff needs to be heard. So if I sound a little broke up with this, I apologize. And I'm going to start it off this way. I'm here today to ask for 310 Court Avenue to be able to get a tavern liquor license in place of what has been a food liquor license. All I am asking for is not to have 51, to not have to serve more than 51% food. I want to put in a bar that will have a giant yard pong, which is where you play with the big brute garbage cans, that I have some photos of. If I could get one of these guys to help put these on the screen that I'm not real This is where we took a game that used to be called, used to be called Beer Pong, and we do it with a volleyball. And we set it up, okay? And they play it all night. The first time I'd done this was over at my Big Lairs building across the river that I have since sold, and we had a big teachers convention in. I couldn't get the teachers of like 55 to 60 pushed out. They really loved it. It's a good time. I have another picture here of one of the games that I want to put in. And again, it was, been kind of rearranging these, so give me a second. We also built this for Big Lairs, and I since after selling it, put it in my backyard that I've been wanting to find a place to put it. This is a giant pool table, okay? It's 18 inches off the floor. You step up onto it. Them big pool balls you see there are actually painted volleyballs, and the people kick it to play. Again, I can tell you that all age groups went crazy for this. I'm going to give you just a couple of things here with some decor. That is the building that I took over at 212 Fourth Street that I just give for an address, that's on, again, on Fourth Street. Here's my decor that's currently on my walls. Kiss, a 1983 tour. Guitars on the DJ wall. Elvis Presley. Dirty Dan. Dirty Dancing. Alice Cooper. It doesn't look to me like I have been much of a problem place, or that I'm trying to cater to a crowd that wants to fight and cause problems. I've kind of explained what I want to put in, but I will also in here have a lot of large screen TVs, and I will host all the sports games. I will also have food, but the food is going to be of a simple food. It's not going to be that I'm starting out with two pounds of flour, and I got to put margarine in, and this and that. It's going to be boogers, tenderloins, nacho platters, and lots and lots of appetizers to enjoy during the games. I want to, you guys touched on square footage of the building. I would like to mention that the, it is not 8,000 square feet, 7,999. Okay. So the kitchen is 3,500 square feet of this. It was Spaghetti Works. They had a huge kitchen. They've got two vents in there. I mean, this kitchen's probably huger than any kitchen in the city of Des Moines. I will actually be doing a bar in about 5,500 square feet, which is no bigger than any of the other bars downtown, and smaller than a few of them. The Smithson family, I have read some of the complaints that's been sent in, and they're lies, and they're obnoxious. I've been in the bar business on Court Avenue for 33 years. Any city, state, or government employee, right now that's been there for 33 years, please stand up. It's a lot of damn experience, and I've learned a lot of things the hard way. I guess I'm going to go to this part next, as I was trying to switch a few things around, and I apologize again if this is broke up. I did not want to do this if it was going to be a problem for the people that live above the Spaghetti Works. I'm going to put over $400,000 down to do this project, and I'm still going to have a loan for a Mill Point, $200,000. And I'm going to spend $200,000 remodeling it. I doubt that that person really wants to have any problems. And in fairness to the other bar owners downtown, not a Smithson bar, all the bars, we're taking a lot of heat for what we have nothing to do with. Let's talk about what we really have. How many apartment complexes have been built downtown? Can you answer that, anybody from the city? Would you agree that I can drive through the Court Avenue area, and the East Village area, and the Graves Lake area, and we have apartment complexes, one apartment complex, many times, that almost looks like a city, there's so many units? But when, and we talked these police calls, I've heard 745 in a year, 745. You've had thousands and thousands of apartment complexes, with if we even take them just times two people, you've added many, many, many thousands of people downtown. Common sense tells us that Des Moines shouldn't have as many problems as Chicago. Chicago should have more. Why? By population. News, right here, wherever all the cameras are. A news article read, and please let me find it.
Larry, I don't want to interrupt you, but you've got about 90 seconds left, so as a courtesy, I just want to let you know
What's that now?
You have about 90 seconds left, a minute and a half.
Two being killed on Court Avenue, near the Court Avenue District, near, 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 near the Court Avenue District. How about that read, "Two men killed in a Polk County parking lot, one block from the police station." The news is hurting us. I do want to go to this quick. Keeping a bar safe is not about how much food you serve, it's about the music you play, not tolerating troublemakers, having fun things to do, and training your staff to properly take care of things. I would like to throw this in, the Smithson bars, in 33 years have never had a shooting, a stabbing, or a serious injury, and I've had as many as seven bars at the same time. I'd like to thank you for your time, I'd like to welcome the questions, and let's be blunt, let me have it, because I would like to answer. Thank you for your time.
All right, Larry, yes, if you're willing, we might have a few questions. Anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Smithson? Larry, you might know by now, I'm not afraid to ask questions, so I just got a few basic ones for you. You referenced that you are currently operating a bar, a tavern, a conditional use location at 212 Fourth. Is that what we would call pints?
No, that's called the district. When they had to close the district down, I originally named it Celebrations, okay? But because the district was a popular place, and we wasn't the one that everybody knows being the problems in the building, we named it District.
The District, okay.
Yes.
Sometimes names and addresses, they don't
And I would like to add that in 18 months, we have not had one push shove, or one police call, or one ambulance.
And is that the only operation you've got right now near or on the Court Avenue?
Yes, my sons have one each, but I do, that's the only one I have.
And in comparison to this location, which is 7,999 square feet, I think, as you said, about how large is your, is your operation there at the district for square footage? What would you guess?
It's got a little bit of a balcony in there, I'm going to say about 2,800 square feet, but that's a very, that's a very small bar.
Okay. And if this is granted here, you talked about investing in, in that location, are you still going to be a tenant, or were you looking to purchase the property?
No, I'm going to purchase the property.
You are going to
I am.
Which includes the whole building?
No, no.
No, you're just purchasing
The building itself is a condo situation.
Okay.
And I've equally approached the lady that is, just certain for time, I'm bouncing around. I approached the lady that manages the apartments upstairs. I explained my situation, what I was going to do, and she was more than welcoming. We exchanged information, and agreed to have open channels, that if anything, there was any problems, that we'd visit with each other and get them corrected.
So you, in essence, would be purchasing a unit in that building, but it would be a unit for commercial activities, right?
I'm not sure you understand.
Are you purchasing some kind of real estate, then?
Yes, I'm
Yes.
The Spaghetti Works building is condoed out
Right.
and Johnny's is separate condoed out.
Right.
And then you have a corporation that owns the middle piece
Yep.
with the stairways to get upstairs to the 48 units that's on the second
So you'd be purchasing a portion of that building?
I'd be purchasing 7,999 square feet.
All right. And I appreciated your photos to kind of lay out what you're doing, the large-scale beer pong, you know, I, that was probably a hefty investment in those big garbage cans to build that, but I get it. But tell me a little bit more about your intended operation. I know you had a little quick sketch map there, but are you looking at have any stage there to have like live music, or live vocal performances, or any concerts?
Here's the thing, I'm not a big live music fan, okay? And I'm not, because, not that I don't like live music, but it is too loud, okay?
Okay.
It does create a lot of sound, just, I will have a DJ in the evening, as it gets a little later. And we have been through the building many times, figuring out how we'll set up the stereo system. I've checked online, there's even things that, the speakers will put mainly from the floor to whether or not up toward the ceiling. And there's also rubber mats that's designed to set speakers on, that will help, sometimes it's not just the noise, it's actually the vibration from the lower end of the music, and it will stop that. Equally, in this building, when they remodeled it and put the apartments upstairs, they dropped the ceiling two feet, so there's a dead space of two feet between the ceiling and the floor of the first set of apartments. They didn't do that really for sound, they did that so they could run all the plumbing and the electrical and the sewer and the stuff they needed to run through the building.
Got it. Okay. All right. And if you purchase this, I understand you're going to, generally speaking, the kitchen area will remain kind of a kitchen prep area, right? You're not tearing out those walls?
No, that's correct.
Are you keeping the fire truck?
The fire truck has been gone for a long time.
Oh, darn.
You haven't been, you haven't been down there for a long time, everybody tells me that. And I forgot, I, I'm sold that I ate at Spaghetti Works when it first opened
So did I.
a few weeks later, but, and they had the fire truck, and it was cool. Now they've condensed it down, I don't know why, to some little bitty truck that's in the middle, but I did keep the truck, because I liked the truck.
Got it. All right. Well, those are my only questions at this time. Anybody else? All right.
I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
And we will come back to you for a three-minute closing after we take all comments from others. All right, so the way this next part of the hearing works, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for this conditional use? We start off with anybody in support, you'd have up to five minutes. If anybody wants to step up that wants to speak in support, now's your time. Going once, going twice. Okay, if there's anybody that wishes to speak in opposition, just kind of raise your hand. Okay. And all I am going to ask of all people is, number one, you've got up to five minutes, we need your complete name, address is appropriate, we ask that you keep your comments relevant to the conditions this board can look at for information and testimony. And, you know, if you feel that somebody else has said pretty much what you're going to say, you're welcome to say, hey, I agree with Sally, or Billy, or what have you. But it is your time to use, as long as it's relevant to the hearing process. And we don't have you take numbers, but if somebody wants to jump up, I'd say, figure out who wants to go first, and, and look forward to your comments. So name and address, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, Committee. My name is Karen Spiker. I live at 400 Walnut Street, which is the Kirkwood Building. I'd like to speak to more of a neutral position, and my experience is with having a music venue below a residential area. I live on the 10th floor, on the west side of the Kirkwood Building. Below us was, built, a venue came in called The Platform. It was more located on the north side, on the first floor. Now, as my understanding, I'm not an engineer, but as my understanding when that was put in, that the owner, the vendor underwent, they said they underwent an engineering and sound assessments, and to install different sound mitigation systems, and it was going to be a great thing to have in there. In my living in there, again, I live on the 10th floor, on the west side, it was on the front, on the north side, I could hear an incessant thumping that would ramp up, starting about midnight to 2 PM, or 2 AM, chorus verse, chorus verse, dun 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 dun, dun 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 dun, as the, as the music would get going. I brought the owner up, he's like, well, yeah, I can hear a little thudding sound, that fire truck going by sounds louder. Granted, the fire trucks going by sounds louder, that's a one-time thing, a police car, a revving engine, this incessant thumping would wake me up on the weekends. I was also told, maybe it was, as doors were opening, it was echoing, the music sound was echoing off buildings on the outside. They did install a second set of doors, so you'd enter a door, and then enter a door, so the music was more contained. It did help that alleviate some, possibly. I also have concerns within our building, we have a lobby area into the Kirkwood, and this stairwell that goes up to the Skywalk, and along that beautiful stairwell, there's mirrors, mirrors and murals, and you could feel the vibration and see the mirrors vibrating along that stairwell as you went up. It did not exceed a sound limit, we took around sound decibel meters and all, but I probably still have old, old videos of hearing this thudding and thumping sound. Now, my concern is, we have an older building, of course, being the Kirkwood, a 1930s building, but is the structural integrity of the building that's looking at putting in a music and sound system, has that been thought of? Anecdotally, I can speak to the other residents who have units that were on the north side of the building, and just in talking to my neighbors, they could also hear additional sound, and gatherings of people out on the sidewalk and streets as well, which will happen in a, in a community, in an area like that. So in wrapping up, I'd just like to speak to the points. My concerns are, has the structural integrity of the building been considered? One, from a vibration and engineering standard, which is beyond my scope of practice as a, in my career, but has that been thought of? What is the, speaking of the noise to the residents, of sound, not just music, but vibration, and other types of noise that might come with that? And third, just the potential of crowding in, on, on the sidewalk, outside that area and on the streets? I know right now, I believe there's even outside seating, so will that be all put internal into the building, and how will that be addressed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate your comments. Any questions for Karen? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You've got a good rhythm and beat, by the way. Okay, anybody else wishes to speak? And I do want to remind the audience, we're asking people that want to speak in opposition directly at this time. If somebody wants to give general facts, or speak in neutrality, I'd ask that you kind of hang on to that. So, name, address, and you've got five minutes.
My name is Mary Ann Rector. My address is 119 Fourth Street. You can see the beginning of our building, right in the bottom-left-hand corner of this photograph. And I was out of town when the comment card was sent to my building, therefore, I didn't get a chance to return it, otherwise, would have had one more that said, no, I'm not in favor of this. My concerns are the people coming out on the street at 2 in the morning, we have quite a bit of that already. My concerns are the music, that might be too loud, traffic in the alleyway behind the building, it is frequent motorcycles like to go down there really loudly for some reason. I don't really have five minutes worth of talk, I just wanted to say my comment card would have also been opposed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, appreciate your comments. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition?
I'm Kathy Smith. I live at 418 Sixth Avenue, the Liberty Building, and my comments are very short. I just don't feel we need another bar. What we really need is another family restaurant similar to what Spaghetti Works was, especially when we have all the high school tournaments. They need a place to eat as a group that's not terribly expensive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dana Schaefer. I live at 300 Walnut Street, the Plaza. Thanks for the time, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I speak in opposition as well, similar to the lady that just spoke ahead. We don't need any more bars down on Court Avenue. We have enough noise, we have enough bars, we need family restaurants and other family entertainment. If Mr. Smithson wants to have another bar in the city, let him put it in his neighborhood. We don't need it in the Court District, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Melhuisch. I live at 300 Walnut Street, the Plaza. And at the time, Mr. Smithson was inviting neighbors to discuss his new proposed business on Fourth Street, which is, was the old vaudeville news. He told us at that time that he wanted to have a friendly neighborhood pub. The definition of a pub is a place that serves alcohol and sometimes food. Now, definition of a club, nightclub, would be someone that serves alcohol, sometimes food, DJ, live music, and dancing. So I would ask you, what do you think his business is? He advertised on Facebook a lot of time as it being a party bar, has owned primarily evening hours, and if there was any question as to the nature of what his business really was going to be, was when he changed the name from Celebrations to the District, which he was trying to appeal to his former, his former clientele. Also, there's been a large increase in the amount of noise. I have a balcony that faces Cow's Commons, and I can hear a lot of the noise coming from Fourth Street. Shortly after he opened his, his business when it was back, called Celebrations, there was a large increase in people screaming, and not like they were having fun, I mean, like they were getting injured or something. I hear a lot of noise also from ricochet when people are playing out there in the patio. I can hear people yelling and having a good time, but the noise coming from there is completely different. And when I would go down and speak with some of the employees of the bars down there at night, and asking, where is all this additional screaming and noise coming from, they would all point the finger at Mr. Smithson's business. So noise coming from, they would all point the finger at Mr. Smithson's business. So, I'm just, you know, and I think a lot of, is that giant pong, beer pong game? They get the playing out there and they get extremely worked up. So, if that's going to be outside on Court Avenue, that would be another concern, that you're going to have a lot more people screaming and possibly balls flying into the street that were supposed to go into the trash can. I think that would be possibly a safety issue as well. And I would, overall, saying, you know, he's saying that people are lying about his business, I would say that he has been less than truthful about what nature of his business. Now, he says he's going to have a big sports bar. Is it just going to be another, the District? So, I would ask the board to deny Mr. Smithson's variance in the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Jordan Locke, 604 Locust Street. I live and work at the Equitable Building for Block Multifamily Group. Right now, we're getting in the process. We're going to be converting two ruins to 223 units. In addition, there are a couple other projects that are in the fire I can't speak about. But with all the increase with residential, we really need more family-friendly establishments and not alcohol-centered establishments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Hall Mansfield. I live at 118 Water Street, Apartment 423, which is just less than a half a block off of Court Avenue and the bridge. So, I just want to back up a little bit and remind everyone that we're talking about changing the use of a space. And when the assessment was made, the sociable city assessments were given, and the Des Moines Future Forward reports were made, Spaghetti Works was a restaurant. And they all say, we need to have more diversity of businesses. We are a neighborhood. We, you know, have one Hy-Vee, but we need a diversity of businesses. And now, we are going, if this was granted, we would be increasing the concentration of those businesses that they are trying to lessen the impact of. It becomes a public safety issue for people that are using those establishments and those people that live around them, for law enforcement. I ask that you deny this motion because I understand what this applicant wants to do. However, I think the city is moving in a different direction, and I think it's a positive direction for the density of residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I also live at 604 Locust Street. On September 4th, the Downtown Neighborhood Association monthly meeting published an updated agenda that said that Mr. Smithson was coming to speak to our neighborhood group at our meeting. I was very excited because I knew that he was on, he had delayed his participation on the agenda in front of this board, and I was anxious to hear from him personally. He came to the library, but then didn't come into the meeting. For whatever reason, he didn't want to speak to us at that night. There were about 20 or so neighbors there. I read recently in the Register that there was a smaller meeting, I don't know who was invited, that two people showed up. It seems to me that Mr. Smithson kind of has a PR problem, and you would have thought that he would have taken advantage of the large, relatively large turnout to pitch his business plan to the neighbors. So, that's a little disappointing. I didn't hear it until today. Also, there was a few sort of negative remarks made about renters downtown, of which I am one. We kind of like it there, and we like all the vitality that the new residents bring. And we are a diverse group, not only in age, in income level, and childless or not. There are kids down there, and I think it would be great to have a restaurant like Spaghetti Works, not exactly like Spaghetti Works, but a restaurant down there that would appeal to the diversity of neighbors down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi, my name is Julie Fire. I live at 201 Grand Avenue downtown, and I am also a member of the Neighborhood Association and a board member as well. I was at the same meeting that Carol just referenced, when we were looking forward to hearing from Larry, and he, Mr. Smithson, I should not call him Larry, I don't know him very well. I was looking forward to hearing his pitch and then was disappointed that he left. The second meeting that she was referencing was that, and I think we have a copy of that that got posted. There was a letter handwritten dated October 11 that he sent to our board president, and she received that, I believe, day of the meeting, and she quick-sent out a message to several of us on the board, and most of us were not able to attend because I learned about it just hours before. And so, therefore, two out of the eight board members that we have did make it, and I thought that was fairly good representation. But yeah, we did not get a chance to hear from him. Mostly, I am just opposed to it because I feel strongly I'd like to see more diversity of offerings downtown. We have bars. We have bars that have games. We have bars that have screens. And yes, if you put up a bar, that's what you're going to sell. You're going to sell alcohol and not food. If that creates a problem, then I'd love to see something else that goes in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, be the nice guy I am. Again, is there anybody who wishes to speak in neutrality? Any just general thoughts related to the matter at hand? Going once, going twice? Yes? If you haven't spoken yet, you're welcome to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm just, my name is Deb Madison Levy. I live at 111 10th Street, and I've lived there for the past nine and a half years. I started working in downtown Des Moines in 1981, however. But anyway, I'm just here to provide comments as a resident who values neighborhood vibrancy, as a grandparent who entertains my family in downtown Des Moines, as a board member of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and as a peddler of an ice cream bike swinging sweetness around. And noting some of the similarities in the appeal before us here today, I had to revisit the online zoning board of adjustment meeting that was held on August 2, 2023, the session on Court Center, which is now known as the CC. And with that, I appreciate and truly value the progress that has been made there since then. I mean, it's been very engaging and collaborative from that point. But as we all know, downtown Des Moines has been going through cycles of development since the city was incorporated in 1853, and our progress continues and our pride remains constant. So, I think we can all relate to the fact that things change and our neighborhoods evolve. I think it's so important that we all engage with all these different factions and just look at how progress can be made. Progress requires thoughtful planning ahead, and I simply wanted to say that I applaud the work that the zoning board of adjustment has done, that the city of Des Moines has done, that our downtown neighbors have done. And it all, you know, it all, our collective work continues. And I just wanted to thank everyone for all the work here, and let's keep the conversation going.
Great. Thank you, Deb. Appreciate your neutral comments. Anybody else? All right. So, what we'll do here, we'll get back to Mr. Smithson in a second, but board members, do we have any further questions for staff? Anything you'd like to ask zoning enforcement or our staff planners? If none, Larry, you can have up to three minutes for closing comments, if you will, in essence, the last say before we go to our deliberation.
Thank you for the three minutes for rebuttal. First of all, I would like to address Karen, the first speaker. The place she was referencing, it was terrible music, okay, loud, obnoxious. I'd be the first one to say I wouldn't go in it. It's called EDM music. It sounds like a semi going down the road and their brakes are going out. It's a bunch of banging and screeching. Okay, she's 100% right. I agree with her, and it is obnoxious. Everybody here seems to have a problem with alcohol. I don't know the difference between alcohol, if it's under good supervision, and a responsible person, and a restaurant. You can have the same problems. I'll just reference Ingersoll, but I have nothing to do with Ingersoll or picking on this man. The apartments that they want to secure, I think the apartments are secure. The things they want to complain about with some of the noise that's late, a lot of it is the apartments. When I leave, the stuff that I see in nice weather at 2:30 and 3:00 AM on the balconies, the noise is unbelievable, way louder than we are. And yes, I did ask to speak to the Neighborhood Association. I reached out to them. I put all these pictures together that I showed today and even more, and I wanted to show up with an open mind, with a little spill, and answer all their questions. When I got there, they had the press there, and I didn't need the press twisting the story more and getting people to argue and putting up one side against the other. And I apologized, and I can't remember her name, Deb. And I said, you know, I'm sorry. Thank you for having me. You was very nice about accepting my invitation, but I'm not here to speak and try to convince the press, but I am here to speak and try to convince you. We have the, Mel said, we have a Court Avenue entertainment district that's been established for a lot of years. You have a city, you have a police department, you have a council, and you have a variance board. If you've got a bad player, get rid of them. But don't punish good players. They talk about how they want to see stores down there. Hy-Vee can't make it, okay? And you've got, they want, they want everything in there. They want stores. They want this. They want family foods. These apartment complexes, guys, I don't want to hurt nobody's feelings. They're low-rent housing projects, most of them, and they get federal funding and everything else to do that. And I'm not knocking poor people. God bless. Let them have help. But these aren't families living downtown. These are young people living downtown. And don't, the city can't keep blaming everything and sweeping under the rug and blaming it on the bars when there's a problem downtown. I referenced the one article already. We won't go there. They've had a lot of valid points. I would just like to say, for 18 months, the Spaghetti Works building has been empty. If you think that looks good for Court Avenue, it doesn't. If you think someday that's going to be good for Court Base with everything else we got on tax base, I'm sorry, it's not. And I'm just here to put a nice place in there. I've explained that I have the experience to do what I want to do. I cater to fun people. I have signs up on my establishments, great big one, that we welcome fun people. I do everything within my reason. Can I guarantee that nothing will ever happen? I can't. What I can guarantee is nothing bad's happened in 33 years, and I think that's pretty strong. I think I'm the best person for the Court Avenue building. We will have food. We will have fun entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. All right, the way the hearing works for this item, we now close the public portion. The board will go to deliberation. That deliberation is here and now, but it will only be a discussion between board members. So, board members, we've had presentation. We've had testimony today. Does anybody have any initial thoughts on this issue? Things you'd like to share with each other? Any conclusions you've made? Come on now. This is our job. Jump in, Marlis.
Okay. I guess quickly, I would have to support the staff recommendation. I do not see where he has made, has satisfied the criteria of granting a conditional use. And I do think those studies about the sociable assessment and those other studies are very important, and I think when the effort has been taken to do those studies, we do need to take those into account. And I do hear very negative things about some of the establishments in Court Avenue, and I'm kind of surprised no one's been hurt in Smithson's establishment, but could be. He knows that better than I do. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Other thoughts? Heather?
I, I agree with Marlis. I feel like this doesn't fit with the greater vision of Court Avenue District for Des Moines, and there has been a lot of time and energy and money spent in studies and recommendations, and this feels like it would fly in the face of a lot of that time and money and energy that's been spent.
Anyone else? Well, I appreciate your comments. I'm one that, you know, I'll sit on my hands for a bit, but I'm not afraid to weigh in either. Larry may have operated on Court Avenue a little longer than I have, but I was taking dates to Spaghetti Works in high school. So, it is not just a bar district. That was a big deal to go to Spaghetti Works when you were 17. First date with my wife, 27 years ago, I upped the ante, and we went to Nacho Mama's and had a nice dinner. So, there are restaurants out on Court Avenue. There have been restaurants on Court Avenue. It is not just a bar district. But the Court Avenue District is at a critical mass. It's at a tipping point, and that is not in a good way. The last five years of what has gone on down there has literally been embarrassing, and I say that in aggregate. Where else did we have to close streets and set up cages to keep patrons in and to keep other people out? What kind of an entertainment district is that? And I'm all for giving people a chance and giving people a shot, but this does not matter who wants to operate it. This is about what the operations are, and Court Avenue needs to find a new direction if it is going to remain viable. If the Spaghetti Works building has sat there for 18 months vacant, there's probably a reason why, because others don't want to invest in it, if there's just going to be a bunch of continued bars down there. It should be more than that. And Heather, as you mentioned, and I think, and Marlis did as well, you know, we have a zoning district already. It calls for mixed uses, so it does call for living, and it does call for retail. That's what the zoning district is for here. But the larger thing, Plan DSM, that's our comprehensive plan, that directs the zoning ordinance, it talks about having this being a larger entertainment district. The studies, two of them in 2023, that the council adopted, when the council adopts a study, it's policy. We've had that proven both in cases before, even in court appeal cases. The city's direction is, they do want to see more varied uses down here. This board is not here to make policy. We aren't normally here to say, well, I think a better use for this location is this versus that. But in this case, the city's policy already has stated they want to see more restaurants. They want to see more entertainment uses. And those entertainment uses are not just bars that have DJs and drinking games. When I think of an entertainment district, I think of a place where you could go and sit down and pay a ticket and see a performance of local musicians. Go to Printer's Row, go to Second Street Nashville, go to Beale Street in Memphis. Are there bars there? Yes, but there are performance venues. You should be able to go down and watch a comedian. We talked about maybe having a movie theater down there at one time. There are plenty of things that this district can have in it, but it's developed a reputation that it's just a bar district, and if you go down there, you're going to run into trouble. And if we don't get this ship turned around by coming up with a different vision for down here, I know where it's going to go next. So, this is one of those things, if Mr. Smithson says, hey, I'm a good guy, give me a chance, you know what? He's one straw to put on that camel's back, and eventually, that camel's back is going to break. And I don't care who it is, when you've got a 5,000-plus-square-foot bar proposed, it would be one of the largest down there. I have been on Court Avenue at 2:00 AM at closing time. I've been on Court Avenue at 2:00 AM doing a police ride-along, and I can't tell you how embarrassed I was with what I saw and what our police had to put up with and what they had to do. And that was not on a special weekend. That was on June 19. The police cars have to pull into the street and shine their spotlights on people, like animals, to get them out of the intersections. People were accosting police officers. People were fighting with each other. This isn't the stuff that makes the news. This is the typical stuff. It only makes the news if there's a shooting or a stabbing, because even the news folks are probably home at 2:00 AM, and they're not out there. So, if I'm a little concerned here, yep, I sure I am. I've been on this board a long time, and I think that's part of my service to this city. I think sometimes you've got to speak the truth when the truth is there, and it is time to look in a new direction. So, if existing taverns want to run things right down there, that's great, but I can't see adding another straw to break the camel's back here. So, I'm up for anybody else that wants to add comment, but I'm going to make a motion for Staff Rec to deny the requested conditional use. Second by Marlis, before we go to vote, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we got a motion and a second for denial. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries 6-0. All right, motion carries 6-0. So I appreciate everybody coming down. I appreciate everyone who's a current business owner, who's invested in that area. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 7-0. See, Tom, I was counting heads before you got here. Yeah, 7-0. But I appreciate everybody trying to work together. The Court Avenue District can, it is a good place. It can be a great place. So I appreciate you all coming down today. So we have other business to tend to here. Our next item on the agenda is a conditional use request at 2907 Douglas Avenue. And Frank is going to give us some background. Thank you, Bert. All right, Frank, show us all yours.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Item 5 is located at 2907 Douglas Avenue, and the proposal is use of an existing 3,000-square-foot building for liquor store use with sales of alcoholic liquor, wine, and/or beer. The building, the property itself is approximately 18,000 square feet in area. The building is existing. It's 3,000 square feet. Previous life, it was used as a restaurant and tax preparation services. The applicant is looking at investing, I want to say, and they could clarify, but I believe it's over $400,000 in renovating the space, interior, exterior, for the, for the space to be used as a liquor store selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer for off-premises consumption in an MX-3 district. The applicant has indicated that they do plan on having a variety of prepared foods there, other convenience items. So the intent is to have somewhat of a convenience feel to the space. I'm going to go ahead and show, show the premises. Here, it's, it's located just east of 30th on the north side of Douglas Avenue. The, the area that it's located is what we call a community node, and it's also Douglas Avenue, Highway 6. It's intended to have larger traffic counts across the corridor and within the node itself. The, I'll go ahead and scroll through the premises, a couple photos. So this is just really looking at the, the front of the premises, the existing building. Here's another shot, more of, more of the side. There is a driveway that loops around, and you can see it on site plan, but I did not get a good shot of the driveway on the other side, which has existing parking there as well. But the site plan does a nice job of showing what that would look like. And so showing some modifications here. And so you can see the traffic flow is to enter on the east side of the building. It wraps around, loops around, and then parking on the side with entrance to the building along the front, which faces south across Douglas. Some interior shots. And here's a layout plan. And here's, here's the better description of what they intend to do for renovations. It's earlier, I said 400,000. So they're anticipating putting 600,000 in renovation into the building. It would be open seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to midnight. Now, the, the typical review criteria does apply. The property is zone MX-3, which is intended for mixed use, and it allows for a liquor store use subject to obtaining a conditional use. Now, there are a couple criteria that, that are, in particular, that they are meeting, and those are separation distances. So there are separation distances that they need to maintain from church use, schools, parks, daycares. And then there's separation distances of a, from another convenience liquor store use. So that could be fuel stations, that could be convenience stores, tobacco stores that are smaller in scale that would sell alcohol. The applicant is meeting all of those separation distances with, with the site that they have chosen. And so as we looked at the criteria, the applicant has met all of the criteria that, that we generally look at. So staff is recommending approval of the request for a conditional use subject to meeting conditions. And I'll, we'll go ahead and scroll through those. They're fairly standard conditions. And so as part of every conditional use request, that applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting as well as we send out cards for comments. We did not receive any comments related to the notices that went out. Did receive one call in which the, the caller was wanting more information about what it is that they're proposing to do. And then they had, oh, there, there's one in support. Sorry, there's two support. We did have one caller that, they provided some questions. They asked for the email and contact information of the applicant, and they did send some questions to the applicant who held a neighborhood meeting, and no attendees, but they did answer some questions here that the applicant or the caller had asked. And they're right here in summary. I believe there's a total of three questions. What percentage of call sales will be? And then here's their answer, third question. Another answer. And so the, the applicant can speak more to the Chicken King franchise and what that means to their operation. So that, that is one of the intended uses of the premises is to work with that franchise and sell those prepared foods as well. That was their notice letter. But there were no, no one that had showed up to their meeting. That is my presentation. What questions do you have for staff?
We have board members. Any questions for Frank?
I just want to question. How many other liquor stores are in the neighborhood?
We, well, we look at, we look at the separation distances, and within the separation distances, there aren't. Now, there, there is, I believe Hy-Vee has alcohol sales, but there isn't another liquor store that fits in the same category that exists within our code, which would be more of a limited retail or liquor store, sorry, in those categories. So I can't answer that question outside of those separation distances.
Other questions for Frank? Brief one I'd have Frank. You might have mentioned this, but I was certainly trying to read, listen at the same time on a few things. Has this business sat vacant long enough that it'll trigger site plan? So they might have to, you know, have a site plan, improve landscaping, stripe their parking, all that?
Well, so the, the business would be a change of use, so.
Change of use, okay. So that triggers it as well?
Yeah, there, there was originally a restaurant that was in there. And it's my understanding that there was some damage that had taken place. And then it sat vacant for a while. But the, the applicant can certainly speak more to that side of things.
But at least from legal or procedural, this would trigger site plan requirements? Is that correct?
I, I believe that, I believe that it would, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, applicant, or representative, or both. Just need your name, address, guys, and you can have up to 10 minutes.
Chairman, members of the board, Lloyd Ogle, 301 East Walnut Street, Des Moines. My client, Ender Dylan's here as well. He has a couple other locations. This one, it looks like their investment's going to be around $650,000. About 25% of that cost is to put in a kitchen. At Jordan Creek, there's a Chicken King out there, if you've noticed it. But this is kind of a trend in the industry that we're seeing where liquor stores are bringing in franchises. So in this case, we, even though it's a liquor store, it's not going to have look and feel of it. It's going to, you know, prepared food is a big feature. We, we don't know for sure, but we think the food sales may, may be 50% of our sales. But we are putting substantial investment in that site. There was a prior tenant, and there was a fire. So there's quite a bit of damage, and it's been vacant since that time. My client also owns a liquor store, 821 East Euclid. And then we just opened one on 4,410 Southeast 14th, and it has a Chicken King franchise in it as, as well. Be glad to try and answer any questions the board might have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ogle or his client? The only one that I would have, 821 East Euclid. You built a new building there, and is that the old Valero gas station? Okay, yeah.
Yep.
And you have a, have you remodeled or built yet with your south side location?
That starts this month.
And that's where, again, remind me?
4410 Southeast 14.
Southeast 14.
Right next to Donna's Garage.
Got it, okay.
Built Locksmith.
Right, okay, got it. All right, Kuku?
Just with the concept, will there be any future consumption of alcohol on, on premises?
No.
Okay. And?
It's, it's not allowed, this, the.
Just got to pull it closer to you there.
Conditional use permit we're applying for doesn't allow for on-site consumption.
Consumption, right.
And will there be seating for the restaurant?
Be to go.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure if this is similar or not, but I know I've seen like the Chester Fried Chicken thing at gas stations or other liquor stores, you know, different brand, but maybe same concept? Yeah, okay. Yeah, somehow things smell good, people always buy more, so I get it. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you both. Anybody speak in support? Opposition? Neutrality? Seeing none? Any further questions for staff? Okay, so I think no need for rebuttal with no comments. So we'll just close the public portion, go to board deliberation. I might just lead off. And I do want you guys to nod on something. You've seen the staff recommendations. Do you agree to those? Okay, all right. And Dave, to give you some credit, when we talk conditional uses, sometimes it's like, "Okay, if we give people a shot, it's like a driver's license. There's conditions. If we want to give you a chance, you've got to comply with the conditions, or we can take it away." I don't want to steal your thunder, but, yeah. But I always think that's a good premise on most cases to think about. So, yeah, what do you guys think? Anybody remember when it was Pizza Hut? I didn't hang out in that part of town when I was young. Tom does, okay, yeah. He said Lincoln was president, for the record. Any, any thoughts, any motions? Who's from the northwest side? Tom, come on. Okay. All right, motion by Tom, second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 7-0. Keep up the good work. Thanks, guys. Okay, we do have a little business to tend to this afternoon yet, outside of any agenda hearing items. First one would be minutes from the last month. If you were here last month, if you reviewed the minutes, are there any changes? If so, say so. If none, would there be a motion to approve the minutes from last month? Tom moves, Marla seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who were here? That's everybody but Dave. Okay, so minutes are carried. I don't think we have any new business in the hearing, but if there is no new business, we'll adjourn the hearing. We're going to take maybe just a five, five-minute break? Do you want 10 minutes? Oh. All right, he needs a few minutes to transition. So we're going to take a 10-minute break from the hearing, and then we're going to convene our zoning board of adjustment workshop. So this hearing is adjourned.